Cases opened, eighteen thousand one hundred and fifty-six was the highest it's been since FY twenty twenty, so we're kind of returning to where we were before the pandemic hit. But importantly, we also significantly increased the number of cases closed. In other words, the number of cases that we handled and disposed of during the year. That number two is the highest it's been in quite a while. And this was the first year over the entire six-year period that we actually closed more cases than we opened, resulting in a reduction in our outstanding inventory at the end of the year. As we'll discuss when we go through the dashboard and as we've discussed previously, that's one of our goals. Is to overall decrease the inventory and in particular to focus on decreasing our older inventory to try and get some of the cases that have been hanging over people's heads for a number of years closed and out of the system. And so that's one of the things we're going to be focusing on continuing in FY twenty twenty-five.
George, I hope you don't mind. I just want to quickly add, if you use the metric close during divided by open during, that's the clearance rate. So annual clearance rate is more than one hundred percent. Which again, you know, in the quarterly dashboards, we also provide quarterly clearance rate which is consistent with the annual clearance rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
So this next slide looks at the basically our backlog. This is a way of looking at our backlog. If you'll recall, the timeframe with the guidelines that are set or the goal that we try to strive for in terms of resolving or closing cases is for non-complex cases within six months, for complex cases within twelve months. Our complex cases are just what it sounds like. They're cases that because of their nature tend to take longer time to investigate and make decisions about charging. So you can see here that for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, our overall percentage of cases that met our case processing goals decreased by two points from eighty-six percent to eighty-four percent. But it remained higher than the first three years shown here as fiscal years twenty nineteen, twenty and twenty-one. Similarly, our non-complex cases, we decreased the percentage of cases that were closed within those goals by two points from ninety-one to eighty-nine percent. But it remained higher than some earlier years. And for complex cases, we again decreased by two points, but it remains higher than some of the earlier cases. So the trend is it's remaining roughly the same with some deviation from year to year, although we did decrease the number of cases that were meeting these goals over this time. In part, in part, that may be driven by our goal of trying to close out more of our older cases. But we will see how that goes over the next fiscal year as that remains one of our goals.
Okay, a little addition here about, you know, the connection between annual discipline report and the quarterly dashboard. If in general, we hope nobody would be surprised by the results. So in the quarterly dashboard, we also provided the metric, which is closed case backlog. Then in the quarterly dashboard, we also have a metric that's not included in the annual discipline report, which is the open or pending case backlog. So the dashboard provides more detailed information about the pending case backlog.
Now, this is the third chart that we've had in the in the ADR for the last several years, which shows the case processing time for three types of cases. The top line is the time for cases to be filed in state bar court. And as you can see, the trend in that has been increasing. I'll talk about that in a moment. The middle line is cases closed with no action, a referral or non-disciplinary action. That is cases that are resolved through something other than a filing in state bar court during the year. And as you can see, that's fluctuated, but there also seems to have been a slight trend upward over time. And there is an increase from last year. And then the bottom line is the time, the age of cases open in OCTC at year end. And here you can see that that line, although there's an increase from last year, this line has essentially a level trend with variations over time. So the most concerning, of course, is the top line, which is the time that it takes from the time we get a case to the time that it's actually filed in state bar court, which has been increasing over time. This is something that we need to focus on and will be focusing on over the next year. I will note. And we'll probably do a little bit more analysis of this to try and find this out. But I will note that the number of cases we filed in state bar court is not a huge number of cases every year. And so a few very old cases filed in state bar court can significantly affect this. We have seen over the last several years, an increase in the number of very complex cases that take significant amounts of time to investigate. And in the ADR itself, if you've looked at that in the first introduction, we have tried to outline in two sidebars a couple of the cases that we've handled that have taken particularly long amounts of time to investigate and charge and significant amount of resources to handle, so that everybody can get an idea of what investigations entail and how long they can in some cases take. And you mean, I don't know if you have anything to add to this?
Oh, I especially want to draw the attention to this line, which is open cases opening OCTC at year end. So this is sort of indirect link with the pending case age in the quarterly dashboard. So I I am not too surprised by this, like this go, this went up from fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, because our quarterly dashboard in the past year consistently showed that the pending case age has been increasing. But the again, the link was not so direct, so you need to translate that figure to this figure. But but again, I just wanna provide this sort of indirect link when the board listens to George's next presentation. You know that ADR indirectly covered the pending case age too.
So this is a, this is a new chart, looking at overdrafts of attorney trust accounts, as I think everybody knows, but banks are required to send OCTC a notice whenever a client trust account is overdrawn. That is, if a check is issued with insufficient funds or a transaction is entered with insufficient funds. So this is reporting on that and the outcome and how we've handled those. I think two things to note, which are in the notes on the left. One, if you look at the numbers of cases received, you can see a significant reduction from FY two thousand twenty-three and a more general downward trend from fiscal year twenty nineteen. This may be the result in part of a large number of preventive and educational efforts undertaken both by OCTC and the Client Trust Account Protection Program. So I think this is a good trend. It suggests that perhaps those efforts are working and people are managing their client trust accounts better, so as not to generate as many insufficient funds transactions. The second thing is if you look at the cases closed by OCTC with no action, that is cases that we've just closed and not done anything on. You'll see a significant downward trend there as well, including from FY twenty twenty-two, but more broadly from fiscal year twenty nineteen. This too may be the result of changes in our practices and procedures and in part, for those of you who have been here and recall, we've now created a new client trust account team that handles our client trust account cases. We've put in place new procedures and practices that require that those be investigated more fully and that we close most of those cases with some action, including a resource letter out advising the attorney of resources that they can use to assist in the management of their trust account. We've also been using our diversion program to close more of these cases with warning letters or diversion agreements that impose conditions related to management of client trust accounts. So again, I think these are good trends in terms of what you see in the chart.
And I agree. I I think this is a really positive trend here. Okay, the next one is demographics of disciplinary attorneys. Starting from last year with the board's approval, the state bar started to report the discipline outcomes and also the demographics of disciplinary attorneys. So this year, the state bar obtained discipline for two hundred twenty-nine attorneys, a decrease from two hundred forty-three attorneys from the last year, including sixty-nine, sixty-eight disparities. Last year, it was seventy-six disparities, eighty-five probation with actual suspensions, thirty-three probation with state suspensions and the forty-three reapprovals, public and private. So we have a table, so you can look at the distribution of different disciplinary outcomes across racial and ethnic groups and across gender identities. To provide some interpretation of the demographics of disciplined attorneys, we used two comparison groups. The first one is the percentage of this group in all active attorneys. Then the percentage of a group in attorneys with at least one complaint. Then the percentage of that group in disciplined attorneys. You can see roughly across race ethnicity, the pattern is pretty consistent. Although Asian attorneys are slightly less likely compared with their active attorney proportion, less likely to be disciplined. And the black African-American attorneys and Hispanic Latino attorneys more likely to receive discipline. However, with the call, I would be extremely cautious to draw such conclusions. You can see the sample size here, the cell size here. So this just provides a very quick snapshot for the state bar to check whether anything is too off. Right now, we don't see that from this figure. Gender identity, not surprising and very consistent with last year's pattern. Both both figures are pretty consistent with last year's pattern. It's that here, women attorneys are less likely to first to receive complaints compared to their active attorney population proportion. And then they are less likely to receive discipline to. The last thing I want to highlight is that again, the state bar is examining more thoroughly the disparities in the attorney discipline system. We are updating the twenty nineteen FARC study to examine racial disparities in in the discipline system. But we are also expanding the study to other factors, including firm size. For example, whether there are significant disparities between solo practitioner, small firm attorneys and larger firm attorneys or in-house attorneys. So we are, we are looking at different factors and the goal is to present the study at the next board meeting. That's our presentation. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Wayne and George. Appreciate it. Okay, any questions? Trustee Guana Ventura.
Yes, I was just curious. Could you tell us how many members are there of the state bar? And then also, how many members are active members of the state bar? I'd just like to get a handle on how many people we're talking about.
The the number is roughly one hundred ninety thousand active attorneys.
One hundred ninety. And then how many are just including non-active attorneys?
I don't, I don't have the
It's about two hundred and fifty thousand, if you include the inactive or maybe even two sixty now.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right, going over to either trustee Good or vice chair Cisneros.
It's me. I've got a couple of questions and maybe we can just take them in order rather than me asking four at the same time. On one of the earlier slides, it showed kind of a spike in cases back to twenty twenty levels. And I also, you know, also wanted to compliment OCTC on closing more cases than were opened in twenty twenty-four, which is a significant accomplishment and really fantastic. But I wondered, Mr. Cardona, if there are any reasons for the spike in case levels, any trends that you've identified? Or is it just one of those things? For example, is there a correlation to the number of active attorneys or or anything else?
So the the spike that you see in fiscal year twenty twenty, I believe was likely the result of the fingerprinting project. We had a large inflow that year of criminal conviction referrals from the new fingerprinting. And that caused a spike that has been working through our system ever since. So I think that that's the spike in twenty twenty. When you remove that spike in twenty twenty, I think what you're seeing is generally the eighteen thousand two hundred in fiscal year twenty nineteen was the last year pre-pandemic. And we seem to be returning to that level of complaints coming in. We will see what we see in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, but my expectation based on numbers so far is that for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, I'm expecting that we'll be right around that same number, which may you know, depending on what we see, that may end up being kind of a norm moving forward. But again, we'll have to see what the pattern shows in fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
And has the rough number of active licensees remained sort of the same throughout this period or is it increased?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's increased in any kind of dramatic or significant way that would lead us to believe there should have been a spike in complaints.
Okay, sounds great. And then we also looked at a number of days towards resolution of certain types of matters. And the one that was most concerning was the increase from four hundred and seventy-seven days to seven hundred and thirty days in complex cases. And you, Mr. Cardona, you referred to the fact that, you know, a couple of old cases can skew the results because the data size is small. And certainly, we've all read of some very high-profile old cases that were litigated before state bar court this year. And I was wondering if there had been any effort to sort of take out those exceptional cases and then look at the data from that perspective to see if that was really skewing the result and if that would take it back to a more normal level. Kind of a question for you. I'm just sort of guessing that some of the ones that were litigated this year took an extraordinarily long time, given the press and the counsel involved.
Yeah, we we haven't done that. We will, we'll try and go back and do that and kind of get a sense of looking at the actual cases if we can identify that. I think even with that, we're still going to see the same upward trend in time. In other words, even if we remove those few cases, we're likely still going to see this upward trend, which is why I say that that is concerning and it's something that we're going to have to try and see if we can address.
Okay, well, I certainly don't want to make work for your team. You have plenty to do. So it might be interesting to do if you think it would be interesting, but I'm good with it if you don't think it would be interesting to not waste resources on examining that further.
No, I actually think it is worth looking at to try and get a better sense of why that's happening and and we do plan to do that.
Okay. And then we looked at race ethnicity statistics and I appreciated the point that the sample size is small and so it's tough. And I wondered if there was any, and and we did see that for black and African-American attorneys and Hispanic Latino attorneys, the the percentage of disciplinary cases against those pools of attorneys is still much higher than the percentage that that those attorneys represent in the overall attorney demographics. And obviously, the FARCus report pointed out some of those discrepancies based upon data from quite a while ago. And I was wondering if we had made any attempt to sort of rationalize these numbers with what was pointed out in the FARCus report. Yeah, in other words, are we getting better or are we getting worse? It might be sort of interesting to sort of know. And I know that we're going to be doing a really big study on this next year. Maybe it'll be answered there. But wanted at least to to pose that question. And maybe it's not to you, Mr. Cardona, maybe it's to Ms. Zane.
Yeah, I, I, the upcoming disparity study will definitely answer this question. Are we doing better or are we doing worse in terms of addressing racial disparities in the system? I just want to share my personal observation. Since we started to create this demographic comparison of of disciplined attorneys, I was slightly surprised i- in the good way that the, you know, disparities right now you observe is quite, are quite small. Smaller than I expected, to be honest. But again, snapshot cannot, I, I, you know, we, I'm not confident about whether this is a trend in the last ten years or five years. So we need to look at the model first to draw such a
And just to give you a sense of the timing on that, last year concerned, it's it's far away. We plan to present that report to the board at its February meeting. So it's well underway and will be completed and presented to you early next year.
Oh, that's great news. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. And then you also talked about expanding some of the demographic categories that's under consideration. And you mentioned law firm size or the difference between law firm, government, in-house counsel, that kind of thing. I just wanted to suggest practice area is a big one. I bet there's a lot more complaints against family law attorneys and criminal defense attorneys than there are against people that do civil securities litigation, such as myself. And that might be a very useful area to look at, although I don't know if we have the data to be able to analyze it that way.
We have the data and it's included in the model. We just made very recent effort to standardize the category of practice areas. Now it's included in the data set. And it will be presented to you in that February presentation.
Great, thank you. That was all my questions. Thank you.
Great questions and comments. Trustee Grande.
I don't think this would be for now, but I'd be interested if in the report that we look at next year in terms of knowing, if we can know the rates with representation, like who's represented by counsel or not. And then also along those demographics, I think that would be a useful data point.
Right. So part of the twenty twenty-four disparity study, we included two internal evaluation studies. One is to evaluate the policy and actions we have taken in terms of increasing attorney attorney representation rate. I I can give you the answer right now. We have increased the attorney representation rate. You know, compared with four, five years ago. So I don't know whether that should be included in the annual discipline report, but in the twenty twenty-four disparity study, you will see that more details about that aspect.
Great, thank you.
I think just to touch on that a little bit, a little bit further. One of the things that came out of FARCus report was the Robertson, Professor Robertson recommendations. And one of the things we jumped on really early was sending out a letter to self-represented litigants, letting them know about the benefits of having private counsel. We worked with state bar court on improving the the pro se type materials that are available for pro se litigants. And just really stressing kind of at every stage that we can, the importance of having those lawyers. So it'll be really interesting to see how those efforts are borne out. Appreciative of staff for tracking that and reporting back in the next next report. All right, any other questions or comments? Looks like trustee Stevens. Making some motion? No. Okay. All right. If there's no further questions or comments, we are asking for this item to be approved. And I, just as to, as to that, if there's any sort of you know, technical amendments or like language that needs to be changed, any typos, staff, does staff have the ability to make those changes in between now and when this report is submitted?
That's part of the resolution, the second part?
All right. So having the resolution up on the screen, there's no further comments or discussion. I have the first and a second.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right, first by trustee Good, second by trustee Grande. I have a roll call vote, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Huser?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo not present. Stallings?
Aye.
Teneyes, zero nays, motion carries.
Great. You mean, thank you to you and your team. George, as always, thank you for the work that you and your team do to keep us apprised of what's going on. So appreciate your work. All right, moving on to item five point two. This is a discussion regarding Office of Chief Trial Counsel performance metrics. This is being presented by our chief trial counsel, George Cardona. It's an information presentation only, no action or resolution is attached. So welcome back, Mr. Cardona.
Thank you. I've shared my screen. Can someone just put a thumbs up if you can see that, just to make sure it's displaying okay? So we, this is going through the quarterly dashboard that we talked about. This is for a period, the first quarter after the ADR. So this is for third quarter of twenty twenty-four. So we reported on the Q two twenty twenty-four at the September meeting and this is a follow-up. We have modified the dashboard in accordance with some of the recommendations from the board at the September meeting and in particular, some of the targets were changed as we discussed at that meeting. So with that, here's the summary of our key performance indicators. We'll be talking about many of these in more detail. So the first two, the case inventory and the caseload clearance rate are similar to what we talked about with the ADR. As you can see, our caseload clearance rate for this quarter decreased significantly. It was a hundred and eleven percent in the last quarter. It was ninety-three percent in this quarter. We'll talk about this more in connection with another slide, but in part, this is driven by an increase in the number of matters coming in over the last few quarters. We've seen a significant increase in that. So this ratio, the clearance rate is made up, as you know, of two things, cases closed over cases opened. So if the number of cases coming in over which we have no control increases significantly, that can drive this ratio down, which is in part what happened this quarter. And we'll talk about that. As a result, our case inventory increased slightly from six thousand three hundred and eighty-four to six thousand five hundred and eighty-four. The two measures on the right are basically our quality controls, the reopenings by the CRU. Our target is two percent. We were at one percent for the quarter. Our random audit, which is not a quarterly thing, but is basically, it's a semi-annual audit and we report on the most recent results as soon as we get the last audit. You can see that for this, our target rate is four point three percent. We were at five point one percent in the most recent audit. This, as you'll see when we get to another slide, varies significantly and kind of moves around that target over time. This increase doesn't appear to be a trend. I'm not that concerned about it, although it is above our target for this quarter. So with that, whoops, my apologies. The bottom, the ones on the bottom, average days spent in investigation, as you can see, we're above our core, our targets. As if you remember from the last meeting, these were set as aspirational targets. It's going to take us time to try and move towards those targets. The trend is slightly up for this quarter, which is of some concern, and we'll talk about that later. Same for average days to close, our targets, where we are and the trend slight increases in each of those. Not huge increases, but nevertheless increases. In terms of percent of cases closed within our target, again, this is looking at the backlog. So non-complex cases closed in a hundred and eighty days. We basically stayed the same, eighty-six percent below our target of ninety percent. Ultimately, we want to move to that target and complex cases slight decrease from sixty-five to sixty-three percent. Our target is again ninety percent. slight decrease from sixty-five to sixty-three percent. Our target is again ninety percent, um, with our complex cases, as we'll see. Um, this is an area where we need to work on those. So just, um, to follow up on what you, you mean was talking about in connection with the last one, we included a slide this time. And I'm not going to go through this in any great, uh, detail, but just so you can kind of compare what we report in the quarterly dashboard to the annual discipline report. You can see that we report in the same areas, inventory, backlog, case processing time, case dispositions. Our dashboard has a couple of additional ones, um, respondents with multiple complaints, and then our case processing quality measures. Um, those are not in the annual discipline report, and on the other hand, our annual discipline report includes um, the race ethnicity and gender of disciplined attorneys and has some additional statutory tables that cover things other than our normal discipline cases. Um, so this is for your consideration, um, uh, in terms of kind of comparing the two. So with that, turning to our backlog, um, looking first at the projected cases closed in backlog status in 2024. Um, you can see that we're predicting our backlog to be three thousand five hundred and twenty-one and our nineteen percent, our target is ten percent. Um, the nineteen percent would be an increase, um, and so you can see uh, down here on the bottom, you can see the trend line. Um, and you can see that the trend line has basically remained somewhere between twelve and nineteen or twenty-one percent all the way from 2019 forward. Um, so obviously our goal is to um, get that down, but right now we're kind of consistent with what the trend has been over the last significant period of time. On the other hand, turning to our open cases in backlog, this is something we've talked about before. But when we look at the open cases in backlog, we've seen a trend um, over a significant period of time from 2019 of this increasing. Um, the trend line is generally up. Um, it hit forty-nine percent, um, in, um, last quarter. Um, quarter Q two of 2024, forty-seven percent in Q one of 2024, and now back down to forty-seven percent in this quarter. Um, this is one of the things that we've made one of our goals is to reduce the percent of open cases in backlog. Um, and so we are focusing right now, um, and our focus for both this quarter, um, Q four of 2024 and Q one of 2025. We've identified cases that are seven hundred and fifty days or older. Um, and we are going to try and close out as many of those as we can over the next two quarters um, to try and reduce our oldest inventory and get a number of those cases that, as I said, are hanging over everybody's caseload um, done and out of the way so that they aren't serving as kind of an anchor on the ability to work more free, more current cases. Um, and that will probably be a, a trend as we move forward. Now, the the flip side of that is that as we focus on closing out those older cases, there is a potential that the percent of cases closed in backlog status will increase because we're closing out more of our cases that are already in that backlog status. Um, but it's kind of vital to moving forward to try and keep this trend line moving down so that we are continuing to close out um, our open inventory that's already significantly in backlog. Uh, turning to our, um, closure rate and closure by case age. Um, up here at the top, you can see the trend I talked about. Um, we have had a decrease in the case closure rate from a hundred and twenty-two percent in quarter one of 2024. Um, down to ninety-three percent in quarter three. Um, the number here is the number of cases closed. Um, you can see that there has been a downward trend over the three quarters in that. At the same time, there's been a very significant upward trend in the number of cases coming in from four thousand in quarter one up to now four thousand six hundred in quarter three. Um, those two things combined are what are leading to this, um, kind of significant drop in the case closure rate. Um, we will continue to try and keep our dispositions, um, up. Um, my guess is that we'll try to keep them between somewhere between forty-three hundred and the forty-nine hundred that we saw in quarter one. Um, those are kind of realistic targets that we've set for closures. Um, but this number here, the number of cases coming in, we have no control over. Um, and we'll have to see what happens in Q four of 2024, whether we see a continuing uptick or whether we see, as we've seen in past years, a downturn in quarter four of cases coming in. Over here on the right, our inventory by case age, this is another way of looking at kind of our inventory. Um, you can see that our inventory increased slightly, um, this quarter, which we saw on the first page. Um, it's still well below the peak that we hit in 2023 of Q four. Um, suggesting that our efforts to try and focus on dispositions and closing out our cases is working. You can also see that the blue band, um, as a percentage of that, the blue band is the cases that are um, less than a hundred and eighty days old. That is, they're below the lowest backlog. The blue band has increased while the other two bands have slightly decreased. Um, that too is something we're looking over time to try and drive down the older levels of our inventory and increase the newer levels of our inventory so that we're decreasing the older cases in our inventory first. Um, this slide, um, shows duration of cases at each phase with our targets. Um, you can see that in intake, we're meeting our target of thirty days. The mean, the average is twenty, the mean is sixteen. In investigation, our target is a hundred and eighty days. Our mean is below that, but our average is not. Um, in charging, um, again, the target is two hundred and forty days. Our mean is below that, but our average is not. Um, so again, our goal is to try and drive down these, uh, times cases are spending in investigation and then charging. Um, in particular, one of our goals is to try and decrease the charging time um, since that relates to cases that will be filed in state bar court, which is the upward trend that we saw in the ADR. Um, these are the number of disciplinary filings, um, both by filing and by individual attorney in the instance where, for example, we file more than one notice of charges against a particular attorney. Um, you can see, um, a trend generally of downward in notice of disciplinary charges, stipulations, and criminal conviction transmittals. Um, the last, the criminal conviction transmittals is a result of us having finally worked through the bulk of the criminal conviction referrals that we got as a result of the fingerprinting. We're finally getting out of that. Um, this lower number for criminal conviction referrals is probably more what we would expect to see as a norm going forward. Um, in terms of the number of filings and disciplinary charge, uh, a number of filings and attorneys against whom we file disciplinary charges or stipulations. Um, these are very highly variable based on the particular facts of the cases that we have. Um, we will see, um, if these increase, um, over time or remain at this as kind of a norm. This slide is the one that addresses respondents with multiple complaints. Um, you can see that it's essentially remained stable. Um, we typically have seen, um, complainants or respondents with forty-plus complaints being right around one percent, complainants with, respondents with fifteen-plus complaints being right around five percent. Um, and the numbers we're seeing remain consistent with that. We haven't seen any significant variation in this over time. These are the quality controls that we talked about. Um, you can see here the trend, um, the CRU reopens has remained below the target over the last several quarters. Uh, the random audit tends to vary, but doesn't vary greatly around that target. Um, we'll see what happens with the next one and see if there's any trend of remaining above the target line that causes us any concern. Um, this is the complaining witness survey. Um, when we close a complaint, um, we send out and request that the individuals fill out a survey to provide us with their responses. Um, it's entirely voluntary, and as we all know, voluntary surveys can have bias issues, um, in terms of self-selection. Nevertheless, it gives us information. You can see that in terms of responses to access, um, we have remained essentially the same. Um, the same is true of fairness. Um, for both, um, access and fairness, you can see a slight increase as cases move um, from intake to investigation, indicating what I think is kind of intuitive, which is that as a case gets more attention, um, and there's more responsive action to the person as it moves into investigation. Um, both their sense of having access to the system and their sense of the system being fair when we ultimately close it increase. Um, so that is that. Um, this is our employee turnover. Um, we had a spike, um, in the turnover of our investigators in Q one of 2024. Um, but that has since decreased. Um, we have seemed to have returned back to being um, consistent with the turnover rates for the rest of the state bar and on an annual rate, you can see over here. Um, we are in fact consistent, um, important to us to retain staff because the, uh, kind of uh, training and getting used to doing what people do um, is, uh, there's basically a two to three-year ramp up before someone is highly efficient in handling cases. Um, so it is important to us to try and retain, um, investigators and attorneys to ensure that we maintain our efficiency. And then there's the glossary defining terms. Um, so that is, um, the end of the dashboard. I'm happy to, I'll stop sharing so everybody can see everybody, and I'm happy to try and answer any questions and put up anything that anybody wants to ask questions about.
Thank you for that, a comprehensive overview of all that you and your, uh, shop have been working on. Any questions or comments? Yes, trustee Good.
Um, just a, a couple of questions for you, uh, George, or Mr. Cardona. I was wondering, you know, are there any causes that you can determine for the, um, closure rate kind of issue, for example, were FTEs and OCTC declining? You know, to what do you attribute some of these trends going frankly in the wrong direction? And then part two is whether or not some of these process changes that are contemplated and that are still in process and haven't been effectuated yet, for example, the vexatious litigant issue that we just talked about earlier today, maybe diversion. To what extent will some of those changes, if, if approved and if implemented, uh, the sort of help, um, on some of these trend lines? Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I don't think the vexatious litigant will significantly have any impact on us. We see so few of those that would qualify under the rule. Um, I don't expect that to be a significant change. It's still something important, um, but I really think it will have more of an impact on the court than it will have on us. Um, in terms of trying to have changes that are in effect, if you, if you recall, we did a reorganization last year to kind of change our teams around. Um, I think that has had a positive impact in terms of increasing our ability to handle, in particular, our more routine cases uh, more efficiently, and I think we see that in the numbers, um, in terms of our handling of non-complex cases. Um, in addition, in Q one of this year, at the start of this year in January, we shifted over and set um, some new performance goals for our individual teams that are based largely on overall dispositions by team. Um, and I think that is, and it had an impact in increasing the number of cases that we're closing and or filing. Um, so I think we've seen that, um, you know, the, the more recent, uh, we saw that in Q one of 2024, when our closure rate, when our closure rate increased to a hundred and twenty-two percent. Um, I think the decrease from that hundred and twenty-two percent to ninety-three percent um, is a result of a number of factors. One increases over those three quarters in the number of cases coming in. And also I do think that in Q one of 2024, we took out some of the low-hanging fruit, some of the cases that have been around for a while and were easy to very quickly close. And as we got rid of those, it's, you know, the natural trend, once you get rid of the most easy to close, it, it then kind of moves back to a norm as to what you can close, and I think we're starting to see that. In terms of other changes, um, we have been running the pilot diversion program since October of last year. Um, we are looking to expand our guidelines for diversion to increase the types of cases that we're going to be using in diversion um, in January, uh, starting January first of 2025. Um, my hope is that that diversion program, as we do get it up and running and increase the availability of it and expand it to cover more cases, that potentially that will provide, um, a way to close and resolve more cases that hopefully will address and get the inventory trend moving in the right direction again.
Thanks so much for the comprehensive response, Mr. Cardona.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Seeing none. Mr. Cardona, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have item five point three. This is a discussion regarding Rule two two oh one program performance metrics. And this item is being presented by Special Deputy Trial Counsel Administrator, Stacia Laguna. Welcome, Ms. Laguna. Oh, we're having trouble hearing you here. Not yet. Still cannot hear. I don't know if Michelle Crampton is available. Maybe if we get to skip over to her item. Or Stacia, you want to give it one last shot?
Is Michelle available? In the attendee pool?
Yes, we can bring in Michelle. Okay.
Okay. Looks like Ms. Laguna is having some technical difficulties. We'll skip over, we'll go to five point four, which is the state bar court performance metrics. And we have Michelle Crampton, uh, who is joining us. And then is, uh, Judge Hahn, is he able to join us today?
He should be there.
Yes, he is also joining.
All right. All right. So we'll come back to Stacia here just, just a sec. Give everybody a moment to get their tech.
There he is.
There we go. Welcome Judge, welcome Judge Hahn.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, excuse me. My name is Michelle Crampton. I'm the clerk of the state bar court. I am joined by state bar court presiding judge, Richard Hahn. And I'm happy to be here and to introduce and present the state bar court's performance metrics, after which both Judge Hahn and I can answer any questions you may have. So I will share my screen. Going to present mode. There we go. Everyone can see? Yeah, right. Okay, thank you. So, uh, a general overview, since this is the first time we're introducing this dashboard to the board. The state bar court is an independent court that adjudicates attorney discipline and regulatory matters and is authorized by statute to recommend attorney suspensions or disbarments for serious professional misconduct. It's important to note, the hearing department is the trial level of the state bar court and the review department is the appellate level of the state bar court. This slide provides some key takeaways, some of which I'll highlight when I review the related slides. I'm going to start here with the case inventory and move counterclockwise. In the second quarter of 2024, you see we had four hundred and twenty-three total cases pending or open cases in the state bar court. During that same quarter, the number of cases closed by the state bar court exceeded the number of cases initiated or filed, resulting in a caseload clearance rate of one hundred twenty-nine percent, exceeding the target of one hundred percent. During that same quarter, one hundred percent of the cases closed at the trial level, in the hearing department, that is, uh, I'm sorry, I lost my, my place there with my cursor. The number of cases, blah, 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 during the same time, a hundred, a hundred percent of the cases closed. during the same time, a hundred, a hundred percent of the cases closed in each department, I'm specifically referring to the Hearing Department and the Review Department, closed within their respective case closure timelines of two hundred and sixty-five days in hearing and three hundred and fifty-five days in the Review Department. This slide also shows the average days spent in these specific case stages. In the early neutral evaluation conference stage, there was an average of five days in the Hearing Department, an average of one hundred and fifty days. And in the Review Department, an average of three hundred and twenty-five days. Both the ENEC and the Hearing Department met the targets. In the Review Department, there was one case that was in the Review Department during quarter two that did exceed the average day's target. But ultimately, it met the case closure standard in timeline, I'm sorry, in the following quarter, quarter three. You'll see in the glossary at the end of the slide presentation, the definition of backlog is comprised of cases that failed to meet case closure time standards. In the Hearing Department, that's two hundred and sixty-five days. In the Review Department, that's three hundred and fifty-five days. As this data indicates, there was zero percent backlog in quarter two, two thousand and twenty-four, in both hearing and review. These bar graphs indicate the number of cases closed by either the Supreme Court or the State Bar Court relative to the number of cases opened or filed in State Bar Court for the same time period. In two thousand and twenty-four, quarter two, there were eighty cases closed compared to sixty-two cases filed or opened for the caseload clearance rate of one hundred and twenty-nine percent. These graphs illustrate the number of cases closed in the Hearing and Review Departments each quarter and the average case processing times in each department. In two thousand and twenty-four, quarter two, the twenty-seven cases that closed in the Hearing Department closed well below the average days target of one hundred and eighty-seven days. The one case that closed in the Review Department, as previously mentioned, exceeded the two hundred and sixty-nine day, average day target with three hundred and twenty-five days. But again, it met the overall case closure target of three hundred and fifty-five days in the following quarter. As you can see, the average case time spent in hearing is more often than not at or below the target and consistently below target for the past three years. In comparison, the average case time spent in review for recent quarters was impacted by a few cases particularly complex in nature, but ultimately those cases met or are expected to meet the case closure target of three hundred and fifty-five days. This slide is intended to provide information on early neutral evaluation conferences or ENECs, which is a type of settlement conference that happens prior to OCTC's filing of disciplinary charges. In two thousand and twenty-four, quarter two, cases in the ENEC stage spent an average of five days in conference discussions. There were sixteen cases total in the ENEC stage in quarter two. Fourteen of those cases, or eighty-eight percent, had a single session, while two of those cases, or thirteen percent, had two sessions. As these bar graph indicate, formal discipline, discipline outcomes vary, but the majority of cases result in license suspension, either actual or state suspension, and a term of probation, while a significant number, sixteen, results in disbarment. The least common outcome is a reapproval, which does not affect the attorney's license, but may involve certain conditions similar to probation, for example, a requirement to attend ethics school. And here's the glossary I referred to earlier, which provides all of the definitions and the key terms that I mentioned. And that concludes the slideshow. I'm happy to take, and Judge Hahn and I are both happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. Any questions, comments? Yes, over to trustee Good or Vice Justice Narros.
Yeah, first of all, I just wanted to congratulate Judge Hahn and Ms. Crampton, or Crampton, on just outstanding work. So we really appreciate you and you've done an amazing job. So thank you. And I didn't have any questions. It was just a thank you, really. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee Good.
All right. Trustee Tony.
Thank you. My question has to do with the future utilization of private approvals. There have been some legislation in the fee bill phasing that out. So I wanted to know if that applied to the State Bar Court and just what the status is.
Not, not when you say, did it apply to the State Bar Court? I don't think in the, it's reflected in the current data. I could be wrong about that, but I, I don't think it is. And it may be reflected if, when the number of approvals. I expect they might go down. They're very low to begin with. So I would expect them to go down in light of the new statute.
And just so you know, I think it might be the next item, if not the next one after that, on this RAD agenda is George bringing forward rule amendments to address that statutory requirement that we eliminate private approvals as a disciplinary option or an option effective January one, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? Yes, trustee Stevens.
Can either of you give any of us tips on your case closure rate? And I mean that across the board.
Judge Hahn, I'll leave that to you.
Any tips on it? Didn't quite hear that. How we do that?
Yeah.
Well, I can tell you, in, in a, in a time long ago, there wasn't as much of a focus on closing cases in a timely fashion. We, we tried and we played, we, we all played along and we were working hard, but when Judge Remke was the presiding judge, she implemented a very firm set of standards. And some of us, I was a hearing judge at the time, a trial judge. We complained vehemently about it and in the end, she was absolutely right. We needed to do that. And since that time, we have, I think, religiously followed. And I, I, I don't use that term loosely. It is almost a religion in our court to follow the case closing standards. And in almost every case, it's a hundred percent within the the standards that we've set, and the standards are pretty tight. We, we have, I know in review, which is the one area where we've had one case that went over. We have a very firm time schedule that we follow in literally every case. And sometimes case gets ahead of us a little bit because someone's sick and we have to rush through it, but we, we, we're very proud of that standard and that that history. Thank you for the question, though.
All right. Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much, both of you, for attending our meeting, for giving such a comprehensive view of what you guys do out at the State Bar Court. And thank you for your continued commitment to the fair administration of justice and doing it in a timely manner. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for inviting us.
All right. We'll go back to item five point three. And hopefully, Ms. Laguna has her tech issues worked out. What was the issue there?
Yes, I, I see two, two Stacias. So let me try one. Oh. Um, Stacia, it looks like you've joined maybe twice from two different devices.
I'm getting to see if maybe Ewing or someone from her team. Oh, Stacia, are you there?
It's just here. We just can't hear Stacia.
He might be using her phone for audio. That might be the two.
Well, are you able to use a second device to try and get your audio to come through? Okay.
So, um, Ewing and her team prepared that dashboard. So maybe, I don't know, Stacia, if you're amenable, we could have one of the staff members come and present it, maybe not right now. And we'll move to another item, give them time. Maybe Tuesday, she could try to get on the Zoom with, I don't know, Ewing or Kulan or somebody, and see if we can get your audio working so we could move this down in the agenda. If you're unable to get your audio working, we can have one of the mad folks present your dashboard if that works. Okay?
All right. Okay, so we'll, so we'll table item five point three. Is Steve Moad, is he available by chance?
Yes.
All right, perfect. So we'll go into item five point five. This is proposed amendment to Rule two point five and proposed new rules two point four and two point six relating to the Client Trust Account Protection Program. This is going to be a request to circulate for public comment. And presenting on this is Special Counsel Steve Moad.
Hello.
All right, welcome, Steve.
Thank you. Happy to be back. Five point five deals with the Client Trust Account Protection Program. We are requesting that the board circulate for public comment. What has often been billed as Phase Two of CTAP. Some of the changes are designed to implement various aspects, including meeting one of the state bars obligations under the to be effective January one Business and Professions Code zig zero nine three point one. Also removing the CTAP reporting exemption for licensees who are not entitled to practice law at the time of the reporting deadline. Establishing rules and procedures for compliance reviews and investigative audits. And finally, consistent with the duties of supervising and managing attorneys in Rule five point two of the Rules of Professional Conduct. If a licensee is deemed non-compliant with this rule, any attorney supervising or managing that attorney may also be deemed non-compliant. So that's sort of the, the top hits, if you will, from these, from these rules. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Moad?
Okay.
All right, seeing none. Excellent job. Let's bring up the resolution if we could. All right, if there are no further comments or questions, I have a first and a second.
I'll move it. I'll second it. Go ahead.
All right, I'm gonna, I think I heard trustee Good with the first. I'm gonna give the tie to trustee Huser. And if I can have a roll call vote, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Una Ventura?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Huser?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony? I don't see trustee Tony. Trejo is not present and Stallings.
Aye.
It's nine I's, zero N's, motion carries.
Great, thank you. I know we have Mr. Cardona presenting on the next one. I was wondering maybe if we could just do item five point seven, which involves Steve. All right, well, we, we got George on here. Okay. George, we'll go with your item then. Five point six, proposed amendments to rules procedure of the State Bar of California. This is Rule five point two eight, which involves computing time at five point one two seven, which involves public and private approvals and standards for attorney sanctions for professional misconduct, standard one point two. This is going to be a request to circulate for public comment. And welcome back, Mr. Cardona.
Thank you. So hopefully you can see my screen. Quick overview, these are two different rule amendments, both attempting to correct things that have changed as a result of either court decisions or a legislative addition. So first computation of time, basically there's an existing rule five point two eight that defines how to compute time for purposes of calculating deadlines for filing things. This was, this was the subject of differing interpretations by the Review Department and by the Supreme Court that resulted in a different calculation by the two courts in a particular case. I've put here, basically, the two different calculation times. So as a result of this, there was some confusion. The Bench Bar Committee, which consists of the State Bar Court, OCTC, and representatives from the Association of Disciplinary Defense Council, discussed this at a couple of our meetings. The general consensus was to clarify the rule to go with the Review Department's method for calculating. And so we are proposing that it be circulated for public comment with that clarification, basically to make clear that what you do is what the Review Department did, which is depending on the level of service, you add the number of days to the time period that would otherwise specify when it's due. And then that is the due date. If that due date is not a court day, then you simply move to the next court day, which is a very simple and straightforward way. Everybody agreed that this makes sense and the rule attempts to clarify that. So that's the first modification that we're asking go out for public comment. The next one relates to the topic that trustee Tony raised earlier. In two thousand and twenty-three, in SB forty, the legislature added Business Professions Code Section six zero eight six point two zero A, which says, effective January first, two thousand and twenty-five, the chief trial counsel shall not issue private approvals to any attorney accused of misconduct. Of course, we don't issue approvals. We would enter into a stipulation with an attorney for the issuance of a approval, or we would file disciplinary charges and then the State Bar Court would issue the approval. Nevertheless, we are interpreting this as a desire by the legislature to no longer have us issue non-public private approvals. That is, private approvals come in two forms right now. They can be issued by the State Bar Court after we have filed a notice of disciplinary charges, in which case they are public because they're issued after the public filing of charges. Or they can be non-public. That is, we can, before filing a notice of disciplinary charges, enter into a stipulation for a private approval, which the State Bar Court can then issue in a non-public forum. So we have true private approvals. We're interpreting the statute as saying that the legislature no longer wants us to do that, no longer wants us to enter into stipulations for private approvals before the filing of notice of disciplinary charges. And so render all private approvals now non-private. This would render all discipline public, which makes sense. So our non-disciplinary resolutions would be non-public. Any discipline, including a private approval, would be public. We can't eliminate private approvals because the State Bar Court has and retains authority under other statutes that the legislature has not modified to issue private approvals. And it is another form of discipline and so provides some alternatives. So we are proposing a modification to Rule five point one two seven to implement this to basically eliminate the reference to private approval before notice of disciplinary charges, which is currently in the rule here. These would be the non-public private approvals. And simply consolidate the rule and say that there can be public or private approvals, that both of them will be part of the official State Bar Attorney records. Will be reported as a record of public discipline. And the record of the proceeding is public. We have retained the difference for a private approval. The attorney is not obligated to pay discipline costs. So this is the proposed modification of the rule that we're asking to be sent out for public comment. In addition, we're proposing a change to the definitions in the standards to again eliminate the reference to a private approval, not a matter of public record, because they will all now be matters of public record. And instead, just have a definition of a public or private approval as a public censure or reprimand for purposes of the standards. And so we're also proposing that this go out for public comment. So that is a very quick overview. I'm happy to try and address any questions. And I'll stop sharing so we can all see each other.
All right, thank you, George. Any questions? Comments? All right. I know these are, seems like minor changes. I know they have far reaching implications and help to increase the uniformity of how justice is administered in our prosecution and the way the court handles them. So thank you, George, for keeping us up to date on those and for these proposed rule changes. Any other questions, comments? And if not, may I have a first and a second?
I'm happy to make the motion.
Second.
All right, first by trustee Good, second by trustee Stevens. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Barahona?
I'm going to abstain just because I was not in the room for the conversation or the presentation, so.
Una Ventura?
Okay, so. Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Grande?
Aye.
Huser?
Aye.
So well?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Tony? Just the Tony is not present. Trejo, not present. Stallings?
Aye.
Eight I's, zero N's, motion carries.
All right. Thank you, George. We'll go on to 5.7, which is interest on lawyers' trust account reconciliation report and update on Client Trust Account Protection Program expansion for 2025. So we'll welcome back Special Counsel Steve Moad.
Hi.
Howdy.
You're welcoming me back. Jennifer Stalvey is also, I believe, and will be presenting with me. I'm going to go ahead and share a presentation. Hopefully you can all see that. So this is just an update on the Client Trust Account Protection Program and some planning for 2025. It's been a very eventful year for the Client Trust Account Protection Program. I am very pleased to announce the State Bar's Practical Trust Account Reconciliation e-Learning Course. The course was released on November 1st. There is a quote locked version of the course that licensees can take for one hour of general and one hour of ethics, continuing legal education credits, and an unlocked version of the course posted to our website that law firm administrators, bookkeepers, and licensees who do not want MCLC credit can also take. Since November 1st, 51 people have completed the locked version of the course. An additional 91 have begun taking the course. And 360 people have accessed the unlocked version of the course all in the last two weeks. So we're excited about that. We are also going to just update you on annual compliance reporting. As of June 30th, 2024, we had a larger percentage of people who were noncompliant with the CTAP reporting than as of June 30th, 2023. There are some potential reasons for that. They include the timely deadline was April 3rd in 2023, rather than February 1 in 2024, and a few other reasons as well. Because 2023 was the first year of the program, I can go into more detail if you're interested. But suffice it to say that there were a few more people who were not compliant as of that date in 2024. Regarding the attorney report IOTA and non-IOTAs, this information is going to change in 2026. But currently, banks do not report information about non-IOTAs to the state bar. Therefore, the bar has really no way to independently verify the existence of non-IOTAs. And therefore, it is likely that thousands of non-IOTAs continue to not be reported by attorneys, as we believe is the case with some IOTA accounts. Or as we know is the case with some IOTA accounts. As for balances, at the outset, I want to note that the accuracy of balance data has been limited by technological issues, reporting issues, and data issues, as well as misreporting and nonreporting by licensees. The advent of bank reporting that I referred to earlier in 2026, they will also be reporting year-end balances of both IOTAs and non-IOTAs pursuant to the fee bill. Will help ensure accurate balance information going forward. And so we'll have better information then. As a result of some of the technological issues, et cetera, it's a little bit hard to say based on the attorney reporting. But I can tell you that bank-reported balances for 2023 were 7.83 billion. And bank-reported balances for 2024 were 7.67 billion, and that is for IOTAs only. Now I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer to talk about the IOTA Research and Reconciliation Project and the Compliance Review Program. And the rules authorizing that is what you just agreed to send out to public comment in 5.5.
Great. So last year, we began a project where we started to analyze the data that IOTA banks provide to the state bar, comparing that information to the information reported by our licensees. And we identified about 15,000 IOTA accounts that no licensee had registered in their CTAP. We've done quite a bit of work last year and this year. To date, we're slightly under 10,000 accounts, about 9,900 accounts that remain unregistered by our licensees. We have about 6,000 accounts that we still don't know who the account holder is. So we will continue this work in the next year. So this past year, we had a great summer intern who identified about 4,300 account holders. These were for those IOTA accounts where they had not been registered with the bar. We didn't know who they belonged to. And so what we learned were 150 of those accounts were actually deceased attorneys. We combined that number with the deceased attorneys we had identified last year. And so we currently have a pool of 261 deceased attorneys, IOTA accounts that are open and hold about $9.5 million. Two thirds of these attorneys have been deceased for more than two years. We also learned that of the accounts that had not been registered, those attorneys were three times more likely to have a complaint than the general attorney population. And then we've continued to identify many of these account holders are not actively licensed attorneys at all, as you can see by the chart on the right side of this graph. So we want to look a little bit at the $9.5 million in the deceased attorney's accounts. They present a special problem. First, the banks cannot legally distribute these funds without a living signatory. If the attorney has not provided a backup signatory or a signatory to take over upon death, the funds are essentially held hostage in these accounts. The family members cannot access the funds, the family members of the deceased attorney. They cannot access the funds without having, you know, to pay their own money to go to petition the court to have legal access to the account. Couple of other areas, the client security fund on occasion will make a distribution to a client of a deceased attorney due to certain circumstances. However, the client security fund is not recovering this money from the attorney's trust accounts. And then lastly, OCTC on occasion will take over a trust account. But they don't have the resources to take over all 261 trust accounts, nor would they know who to distribute those funds to necessarily. And don't forget, we still have 6,000 accounts that we don't know who the account holder is yet. So I would expect that there will be more deceased attorney's accounts that we identify. I think proactively, we can educate attorneys and make them aware of, you know, the burden this places on their family and their clients to not have a plan. But we still need to talk about, we'll have to figure out how to address the current problem that we have. Then looking ahead to next year, you know, the legislation provided that we can move into the next phase and perform the compliance reviews and investigative audits. We're currently working with CalCPA to work out some of the parts of the program. We are looking to hire a small staff internally to oversee the program. These will be CPAs themselves. We'll also prepare knowledge articles to prepare our licensees about what to expect and how to prepare for the compliance reviews. We, next month, we will publish the scope of the compliance review procedures for, and publish that for public comment. We also plan to do 25 volunteer compliance reviews in early 2025. We actually had over 300 attorneys and firms sign up to voluntarily be reviewed. We made it kind of a diverse selection of the 25 we will start to start with first. The goal is really to refine the procedures and get feedback from the attorneys and firms before we kick off the mandatory program, which will hopefully kick off in July of next year. And that's all I have.
Great. So I'm taking down the slideshow again so we can all see each other. And Jennifer and I are available for questions if there are any.
Any questions? Yes, to the good Cisneros room.
Just one thought on the deceased attorney problem. I'm assuming that those deceased attorneys are solo practitioners. In other words, there isn't a firm where there are other practicing attorneys. You're all nodding, okay? And then I have just a thought for you to think about, which is what if you created a program for pro bono assistance from law firms to go after that money and to figure out where it should go? Because I'm assuming that it would involve some stand-up experience in probate courts. It could be marketed to people as, you know, providing some in-court experience while also obviously doing good and getting the money back to the rightful providers. I completely recognize that the state bar does not have resources to do that for 265 accounts. But just wanted to kind of throw that out there for your consideration. I could see bar associations, you know, glomming onto that idea. Maybe barristers associations in terms of getting young, smart attorneys experience while also doing good and being overseen by more senior attorneys. So just an idea for you guys to think about.
It's a great idea. We also hope that the ethics opinion that you all adopted earlier on consent will also help. And we plan to do some communication outreach to the attorney population around that as well, because we hope that will drive successor signatories on these accounts.
Great question. Thank you for looking forward into the future. I think, you know, we certainly have seen a lot of reports on the profession aging. And, you know, we're going to have more and more practitioners age out of the profession. So I think this is certainly something for us to attack now to avoid future harm. All right.
If I might, Cherry, just wanted to highlight a couple of things. I think that's a wonderful idea, trustee Good. And I'm kind of thinking of it in line with what we heard from the lawyer referral service providers. That's another area where there is a lot of need to kind of beef up and support the lawyer referral service, especially if there was a way to tap into some of those funds to pay a moderate fee for lawyers. So not all pro bono, but could be low bono to do this work. That would be a great partnership for us to explore. One of the reasons I asked Stephen and Jennifer to really focus on this issue is that it may be that part of your 2026 legislative agenda will need to include, we may benefit from some statutory changes to be able to get at some of that money, perhaps not on the individual basis, trying to have it go back directly to the original client. If that's not possible, maybe those funds go to support legal services or low, a real statewide low bono program, which is really needed. So just something for you all to start thinking about. The other thing I want to highlight here is this whole initiative was inspired by the board. It was brought on by Girardi. And I just, it's only been a couple of years and it's fully blossomed. As you can see, it's a very comprehensive approach to addressing proactive oversight of client trust accounts. It is not all punitive. And I know we heard about the admin suspensions. And later on your agenda, you'll have the opportunity perhaps to address that. But you can see the emphasis Stephen, Jennifer are relying on providing people with support to be compliant. And we are dedicating significant resources to that effort. So I want the board to know that. And lastly, a huge shout out, this whole rad agenda, you see the work of our data team. Mad, mission advancement, led by Ewing, all of the dashboards, our ability to analyze the CTAP data, all of that is dependent on having a strong data team. And that data team was born by a previous crisis, born from a previous crisis of the state bar around 2016 in response to Joe Dunn and some of his challenges as the ED of the bar. We created a data team for institutional accountability. The board created that. So just kudos to the board. And I want to just reflect, use this as an opportunity to say we've come quite a long way. So thank you.
Amen. I will echo that. And just, Leah and I, certainly the presentations that Leah and I presented on together to various bar associations, I think we heard more, more questions about CTAP, I think, than most everything else. Certainly, there are some other issues out there. But I know that Steve, you and your team have really done an incredible job of reaching out to lawyers. And I think the Webster's definition of lawyers could also include a person who has so many emails, they don't necessarily read the emails of the state bar. And that's certainly something that we've, that we've heard, you know, especially when I follow up a question about CTAP with, well, hey, we've been emailing multiple updates. And people are like, well, you know, I just don't read emails from the state bar, which I wish there was a way to bring that more to the forefront of people's attention. I think unfortunately, it's just a byproduct of how many bits of information come before our eyes. So want to continue to strategize on outreach, especially to members of government entities who don't necessarily think that they have to comply just because they've never had a trust account. And so I think that's certainly something else to look at.
If I may, that is one of the things that is at the forefront. And we are working on making the dashboard that the licensees see when they log in to pay their annual fees or to do anything, anytime they log in, that they would, it would make very clear what their obligations are. Now, of course, if their firms or their agencies pay their fees for them, they still may not find an opportunity to log in until their MCLC is due. But hopefully that will, this will help.
Absolutely. All right, the good Cisneros room as opposed to the bad Cisneros room.
Leah, just riffing off of your last point, kind of like a psych prey award is what you're thinking. Yeah. If you can't find a specific individual, I really like that idea. And then I was going to pile on and just say to Mr. Moad and Ms. Stalvey, I'm always super impressed by the CTAP work that's been done. You guys have done an incredible job just creating this and building it out. So kudos to you guys. I think it's always outstanding to hear about the progress that we've made here and all the great things we're doing. So thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to trustee Cisneros for developing the concept with the working group.
Thank you.
That's right. The treasurer of San Francisco knows a thing or two about compliance. All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, this is information only. Thank you. Okay, this is information only. Thank you so much, uh, for the presentation and we'll bid you adieu until next time. All right. We'll go to item five point eight and then we'll sort of circle back with, uh, Stacia or, um, someone in Mad about that. Uh, five point eight is a discussion regarding certification of alternative dispute resolution providers. This is an information presentation only. It is being presented by program director Erica Doherty. So welcome or welcome back.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hopefully see the slides?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. So as, uh, Chair Stallings mentioned, I'm here to provide a preview essentially of, um, a new certification program for alternative dispute resolution providers, uh, that was, um, implemented through the enactment of SB nine forty. So what this did is it created a new statute, which is Business and Professions Code, section sixty-one seventy-three, which requires the state bar to create a certification program for alternative dispute resolution firms, providers and practitioners. Um, for the most part, I'm just gonna say providers just for succinctness. Um, but really importantly, obtaining certification is optional. So ADR providers do not have to be certified. The state bar though, does have to create a program. And what that program must contain is, um, certain certification procedures, various tiers of certification, and it allows for the state bar to charge fees to become certified. So let me explain a little bit more about these requirements. So, um, what an ADR provider is, is really broad. It's mediation, arbitration, conciliation, and any other non-judicial procedure that involves a neutral party. So community boards, resolution centers. Um, I like to think of it as those people who are dealing with, um, chickens and neighbor disputes. Uh, so this also allows for non-attorneys to participate. And so because there's so many different types of ADR providers that could be certified, um, there's no real precise way to determine the number of ADR providers. And, um, because of that, there's also no real way to determine the interest that the certification program could have. So staff is working on, um, trying to develop some, um, or find some clarity around that to determine what this universe could be for those who want to become certified. Now what's required for certification? So section sixty-one seventy-three does set out some minimum requirements for any level of certification. Um, so as an arbitrator to be certified, you must comply with e- ethics standards for neutral arbitrators. And those are, um, uh, required to be established by statute, but they're really established by, uh, the judicial council. Mediators, um, also have to provide, um, abide by ethic standards that are aligned with those that are for California's court-connected mediation programs. All ADR providers have to have a procedure for handling complaints as well as procedures to remedy any failures to comply with these ethical standards that are also provided on your screen here. Now, like I said, there are different tiers that we are required to formulate as part of the certification. And those tiers can demonstrate higher levels of commitment to accountability and to consumer protection. However, these are not quality ratings. So we're not saying that one provider is better than another provider. It's really just about their commitment to, um, specific ethical and operational standards. Um, and so what this really is going to do is just about, um, uh, rate essentially their ethical reliability as opposed to their, their quality of services, as I mentioned. And then finally, just very briefly, this program is self-funded. So no funds from the state bar's licensure fees can be allocated to the program. Uh, the statute does allow for the state bar to charge reasonable costs to administer the program. And initially, those certification fees can be higher to cover initial program costs, such as technology. Um, depending on the number of, um, requests to be certified we get, we could need to have some technology built into this as well as for staffing. So what comes next? Um, so staff is currently in the process of evaluating potential candidates for a staff-run working group. Um, and that's going to include, um, a lot of the potential types of ABR providers that could seek certification. Um, this can range from those larger providers, uh, you know, JAM, Signature, uh, Judicate West, uh, uh, Signature Resolution, et cetera, all the way down to those, um, solo non-attorneys who are operating in this space as well as community mediators. So what we're trying to do is gather, um, a working group members that reflect a wide array of possible program participants as well as, um, perhaps consumers of these services as well to participate in the working group. Um, the staff-led committee is going to conduct, uh, public working group meetings so that anyone who wants to view those meetings can do so in the same way that the Board of Trustees offers public meetings. Um, and they will, and then we'll also engage in other outreach, um, efforts and allow for opportunities for input on whatever those proposed certification require- requirements ultimately look like. Um, we have an anticipated launch of Q two or Q three of two thousand twenty-five, uh, which is pretty ambitious. So we're moving forward, um, as quickly and effectively as possible in this. And with that, I can answer any questions you may have, but just know that there's going to be a lot more to come. Um, and much more information presented to the Board of Trustees on this item at a future date.
All right. Thank you, Erica, for taking this on. Any questions? Comments? Um, Eric, I just had just a kind of procedure question. Um, I know that Senator Humberg's office, uh, was instrumental in getting this, uh, passed. What level of interaction do you have with, um, with their office on some of the day-to-day, um, issues or questions that you might have? Um, or, or is the direction pretty clear?
Uh, so we will be certainly engaging with his office. Um, we've had many people actually reach out to us directly who really, um, want to engage in this, including many, um, you know, of those, um, a- associations for ADR providers. And so we're, we're working with them. Um, and of course, we will be having Senator Humberg's office, um, involved and be communicating with them as well.
And I think we actually contemplated, um, I can't quite recall Erica inviting, um, Senator Humberg to assign a liaison to the working group.
Correct.
Yeah, so close involvement.
And sorry if you already covered this, but on the working group, um, are you going to, um, have a certain number of repri- representatives allocated that are either solo-type practitioners or individuals who don't have that large, uh, firm backing?
Yes, that's correct. I think, um, you know, that we want to make sure this is an equitable program for those who are going to be certified. And like I said, there's just such a wide range here of, um, practitioners or individuals that could be certified. We want to make sure that all voices are heard in advance, that we're not, um, unintentionally excluding anyone from their ability to become certified, especially as it relates to that complaint and remedy procedure. Um, because if you're an office of one, that could be perhaps more challenging than an office of thousands, for example.
Here. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Erica, thank you so much for your work on this. Look forward to seeing, uh, what comes next. All right, we'll go back to five point three. Do we know if uh, Stacia?
We think her audio is resolved, but just in case Kulan, who, uh, created the dashboard is also gonna join.
Okay.
And? Hello, can folks hear me?
Yes.
Here we go.
Hi, okay, third time's a charm. And I'm going to join separately by video. And Luisa will be assisting me with the PowerPoint. So thank you everybody for your patience on this. And thank you to Luisa and Kulan for helping me with a workaround here.
Everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, so this is a presentation on the special deputy trial counsel performance metrics for Q three. Key takeaways for Q three. Um, you'll note in this presentation that case processing time targets have been revised to reflect the targets that were presented at the September meeting by O C T C. Um, our overall caseload clearance dropped this quarter. And that's driven by a significant increase in incoming cases, a forty-three percent increase, uh, despite having a slight rise in case closures overall. The average investiga- investigation time for complex cases met the target. Uh, that was not the case for non-complex, but we did show an improvement from last quarter for non-complex. Average case closure times for both types of cases missed targets due to closure of some old cases. Also, at the end of September, we got the results of our random audit report, which covers the period from May of twenty-three through April of twenty-four. And positive news there is that no cases were recommended to be reopened. We'll head to the next slide. These are our key performance indicators. You can see a rise in our case inventory for Q three and that drop in case clearance rate, like I mentioned before. The top right is our quality measures, uh, no reopens for our internal secondary review process, which is our, uh, parallel to crew. And like I mentioned, no reopens recommended from the random audit report. For average days spent in investigation, non-complex cases, we had an improvement from the prior quarter, but we did miss the target. For complex cases, we were within the target range. For average days to close, both measures were outside the target range. Um, although we did have a slight improvement for non-complex cases from the prior quarter. For percentage of cases closed within target, non-complex, we were just one percentage point off of the target range. And seventy percent of our complex cases were closed within target. We'll go to the next slide, please, for backlog. Give me one moment. Oh. Uh, these are our stats for backlog. Um, you'll note an increase in the core number of cases as well as the percentage makeup of our backlog, um, percentage. Um, I'm sorry, our, our, of our proportion of all of our cases. Um, I think George noted this in his presentation as well, but the backlog percentage for the most recent three to four months may be slightly inflated. The reason for that is the case complexity is not determined until the case is closed. So there may be cases who are, that are indeed complex that are being counted currently while open as non-complex and outside the range there. The two lower graphs show the percentage of open cases in backlog over time and the percentage of cases closed in backlog status over time. Uh, the top right is projections for backlog. If we were to take the data that we have for the first three quarters and extrapolate it across the year, we're projected to have twenty-seven cases in backlog at the end of the year. Um, that would be an improvement from last year. We do have a slight drop in our percentage compared to last year, but it's slightly outside the target range. Uh, we'll go to the next slide, please, for inventory stats. On the left-hand side, you see our cases outgoing and incoming. So the top shows that we closed forty-five cases, but we had fifty-three incoming. And comparing to the prior quarter, you can see that big jump in incoming cases. The top right is case age at closure. The top line is our average and the bottom line is our median. There you can really see how our, our stats are subject to sways by outliers because we have such a small inventory comparatively. So case age at closure, the average number was, uh, a hundred and sixty-one days, whereas the median was nineteen days. So big difference there in our average and median. The lower right is our makeup of our inventory overall, divided by cases less than six months old, between six months and twelve months, and then over the, over twelve months. For this quarter, we had a pretty even split between the zero to six months and the six to twelve months. And we had sixteen cases in the, uh, over twelve months category. Uh, next slide, please. Here we have representations of, uh, the number of cases passing through each phase. So for intake, we had twenty-seven cases pass through. Investigation was sixteen. And five went through the charging stage, which would be either filing of notice of disciplinary charges or reaching a pre-filing stipulation to discipline. Uh, the right-hand side shows duration of cases at each fate, at each phase and, um, the targets there. For intake, both our average and median were under twenty days, so well within the target range. For investigation, our, um, average was a hundred sixty-one, median was a hundred fourteen. So under that one hundred and eighty-day goal. And the median and average for charging were the same figure for this quarter, seventy-nine days and well within the target range, uh, noted there. And next slide, please. This final slide relates to quality. Like I mentioned earlier, we had no reopens through the random audit report. And we had no reopens through our, uh, parallel function of crew, which we call our second look. So, um, nothing to report on this slide. The next slide is the glossary. And with that, I will take any questions, uh, the board may have about our performance metrics.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Laguna. Any questions or comments by the board? All right, going once, going twice. I don't see anybody. So I think that speaks to your level of presentation and the data you just gave us. So thank you for continuing this, uh, this important work at the state bar and let us know if you need any more resources.
Thank you. Thank you. Take care. Bye-bye.
All right, that brings us to the end of the Board of Trustees sitting as the Regulation and Discipline Committee. We'll next go into business, uh, item six. But before we do that, let's take a bio break. Um, if we come back at three o'clock, does that work for everybody? All right, we'll see everybody back at three.
Oh, sorry, we're recording.
Got it. All right. Okay, welcome back. We are moving into, uh, our regular business agenda. That's item six, starting with six point one. This is a proposed new rule, nine point three-three relating to expungement of attorney discipline. This is a return from public comment, a request to approve and submit to the Supreme Court for adoption. And then a, a deferral of adoption of the state bar policy on website removal and directs staff to develop a legislative priorities proposal related to confidentiality of the sponge records under California Public Records Act. And this item is being presented by Deputy Special Counsel, uh, Mia, Counsel Mia Ellis. Well, welcome, Ms. Ellis and also Mr. Moat.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, trustees. Um, thank you, Chair Stallings. Um, as Chair Stallings mentioned, this is a return from public comment, a proposed new rule through nine point three-three on expungement and state bar policy on removal of public discipline and administrative suspensions from the attorney profile page. Just a very brief background and context to this item. The Ad-Hoc Commission on the Discipline System assessed reforms implemented by the state bar to further the effectiveness and fairness of the discipline system. A commission subcommittee examined the findings of the state bar's study on racial disparities in the discipline system. And the study revealed a disproportionate rate of discipline against blackmail attorneys and identified several factors contributing to that, to those disparities. And the commission recommended both a website removal and expungement of discipline as a means of redressing the racial disparities and to align the state bar with practices of other regulatory agencies. And I'm, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve to discuss the public comment and the circulation of the public comment.
Thanks, Mia. So the state bar's public comment toolkit says that enhanced outreach is appropriate if the subject matter is of importance or relevance to readily identifiable audience groups or organizations for which we have contact lists or can easily source contacts. So based on that, I determined that enhanced outreach was appropriate for this circumstance based on the fact that it was potentially important and relevant to readily identifiable groups of people, namely complaining witnesses. We sent the notification of the public comment opportunity out to a list of over thirty thousand previous complaining witnesses, most of which are probably non-attorneys. Uh, we also sent emails to, uh, uh, in, uh, well, in addition to those emails, the public comment opportunity was publicized in the in, well, in addition to those emails, the public comment opportunity was publicized in the All Licensee Newsletter on August 3, 2024, which was sent to 253,351 attorneys. The public comment opportunity page link in that email received 120 clicks, meaning 120 people went directly from that email to the public comment opportunity. The opportunity was also listed on the main attorneys section of the web page, website, excuse me. This page is consistently the second most viewed page on the website after the homepage. It was also promoted on social media, but of course, it's hard to measure the attorney audience in social media, whether that is largely attorneys or non-attorneys. So the public comment opportunity received 457 public comment submissions. 320 were from non-attorneys, 81 were attorney responses, and 56 declined to state. So we really don't know who those were. So that's sort of the, the makeup of the public comment. And of course, the, the nature of the public comment is included in detail in the agenda item.
And, and just to, to add on to those, that figure was for the rule, the state bar policy also received comments and those received 890 total public comments. And about 857 of those respondents actually took a position on the state bar policy. I just wanted to mention that. Happy to take questions or also some of the themes that were highlighted in the rule and the policy are in the staff report, but happy to take questions.
Do you want to highlight our recommendations and why we're making them?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, now I can.
Okay, not, not sure if you highlighted what our staff recommendations are and why.
The staff recommendation based to move the, the item forward is to move to adopt the night, Rule 9.33 and submit it to the Supreme Court for review and adoption, and also to defer the state bar adoption of the state bar policy on website removal pending review and adoption of Rule 9.33.
All right. Looks like we got a question in the good Cisneros room.
Yeah, and just for clarification, Ms. Ellis, what we're proposing to forward to the Supreme Court is what we sent out for public comment, right? And otherwise, it's unaltered from what we sent out for public comment, right?
Yes, it's unaltered.
Okay, so that, that's great. And I completely understand deferring the website issue so that it can be in sync with whatever the Supreme Court wants to do about expungement. So I'm fully in support of that. I just had a question about the enhanced public outreach because when I read it, I was a bit concerned that, I guess now we know 30,000 complaining witnesses were directly approached to provide feedback, and yet we didn't reach out to attorneys who might directly, who might benefit from the expungement rule. So I, I was a little concerned that we had stacked the deck, so to speak, in terms of the public comment. I was concerned about kind of equity. I guess if it's going to be sent the way that we compromised on the last time, I have less of an issue with it, but I just wanted to flag that the way that it was presented, just at first blush, really concerned me that we weren't being even-handed. So.
I, I appreciate that comment and, and I'll take responsibility for that. I was assuming that because it was an all, because it was being sent out for public comment, that it was treated and addressed to all attorneys. It in fact was sent out in an all licensee email in August, as I mentioned. But you're right, we didn't simultaneously and, and send out, reach out to people who may be, who may benefit from that and send them an additional email. That's correct. And we could have done that.
So just as an aside, unfortunately, I don't think a lot of attorneys read the all attorney emails from the bar, which is a huge problem in and of itself, because I think they're incredibly comprehensive about what the bar is doing. And I think the fact that there were only 120 clicks from that email to the site sort of reflects, unfortunately, that sad reality. So, yeah, I don't know what to do about it. I get it that all attorneys were blasted. But I think here, an individualized approach might have been more egalitarian, given that 30,000 complaining witnesses got an individualized approach. So that, that's my only point, but I'm ready to move forward.
But that's, that's also a good point. I can tell you that whether it's an all licensee email or an individualized CTAP letter saying, email saying, action required directed to the attorney, doesn't seem like there are a large number of people reading those either. So, so it's fair.
But I, I want to suggest it's not too late for us to do that. It, it wouldn't be to bring it back to the board for amendments, but it would be to submit with the rule proposal to the Supreme Court. I think it's a good idea for lots of reasons, so. I think I'd be happy to see the board direct us to do that, but I, I think we can.
I, I'd be happy to do it without the board direction, but, but however you, board wishes to do it, I'm happy to do.
If I may, can I also, I'd like to clarify one, my answer to Trustee's Goods question. She asked if it would be submitted as it was circulated. There is, if the, the trustees note footnote one, there is a minor substantive edit, a correction, so it would be going out to submission with that correction.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ellis, can you just remind me what that was?
The, the item that was posted for public comment included reference to a subdivision E.
Ah, yes, yes, yes.
And there was no subdivision E, so it was near.
Right, right. Yeah, that was in the tier, in an immaterial correction. Yes, thank you. Well, material, but, but not substantive. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just a clarifying question, we can approve this, send it to the Supreme Court. Are we saying that we're going to open back, open the public comment period up again? And then submit those responses in the interest of Trustee Goods comments, or is there some other approach that we could take?
Yeah, I'm saying we wouldn't open the public comment portal up again exactly. We would send a targeted solicitation to attorneys who've been the subject of complaints or certain, maybe the subject of discipline, those with something on their profile, like we did with complaining witnesses. And then we would submit those results to the Supreme Court along with what you've seen today.
I appreciate that, and that's a great idea. So thank you.
All right, so one of the things that was brought up in public comment earlier today was the administration or the admin suspension showing up on attorney's profiles relating to non-complacent CTAP. That is one thing that we could act on today as a board, don't have to wait for Supreme Court approval. So I don't know if there's any appetite on the board to act on that, on that issue today.
Chair, what were you proposing that we do?
All right, so if we want to pull up the, the resolution for this item?
And maybe while you're doing that, I could just offer, I think it would be, it, the, it would be website removal, not, not expungement. And you would bifurcate the issue of admin, the admin administrative suspensions from disciplinary history. So the disciplinary history question of when that comes off the website would stay on hold pending action by the Supreme Court on expungement, but the admin suspension portion of the policy could go forward now without waiting on the Supreme Court. I think that's what you would suggest, Chair Stallings.
Correct.
There are three parts to the policy. A, subparagraph A is definitions, and most of those are applicable to, to both or, or to the admin suspensions. B deals with, with non-disbarment discipline, and C deals with the admin suspension. So we could certainly adopt, you know, strike B from, from there and maybe some of the definitions. And then the, if the board adopted that policy, we could move that forward.
So Trustee Good, does that give enough way of the land for you to make a decision?
On the CTAP issue?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, for sure. My only question is whether or not the Supreme Court would want us to, to act before they act on the other, on the other stuff. That, that would be my only question mark on it. I'm aware that we can act, but I'm wondering if it's appropriate to do so.
I think none of us want to speak for them. My understanding is the concern is about the disciplinary record removal. We could check through our informal channels and maybe make sure of that. But that, that's my understanding of where the concern is.
I know that we're going to need a special meeting coming up here on some other issues. I don't know if that's something that we could maybe flesh out a little bit more and how ready for our next special meeting.
I do think we should move forward on the overall expansion issue, which I think we can do without resolving the CTAP portion of it.
Okay, before we get too far afield, let me go to our trusted one of mature.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is, I wanted to understand what the Supreme Court could do. So as I understand it, they could either approve it, reject it, or could they send it back for us to come up with something else, basically? And, and what, what are, if it's just approve or reject, what are the risks we have in putting forward something like this now? Or, or is there? I, I'm just not sure how they would, are they going to give us an opportunity if they reject it to modify it somehow? How does that work?
We don't know, right? So we got a straight rejection of the portfolio bar exam proposal with no, no, like, request to modify, whereas the denial of the original petition on the February bar exam, there was a directive of corrective actions going through the Committee of Bar Examiners. So we could think about how we structure the petition so that we request explicitly if it's denied, you give an opportunity to, to come back again. But, you know, I don't think we control that or know.
When we have submitted other rules for approval of the Supreme Court, they have, as Leah pointed out similarly, they, they have rejected or adopted, and in some cases, they have made modification to the rule and then adopted. So I think the whole spectrum is on the table.
Any follow-up questions on that, trusted one of mature?
No, something to think about.
All right, Trustee Tony.
I'm, I'm actually going to wait until questions are over, so I'm going to lower my hand.
All right, the good Cisneros room.
I think with that additional information from our executive director, I'm prepared to move forward and, and move this. So I just wanted to put that out there. I appreciate Mr. Tony has additional comments.
All right, any other questions before we get to comments? All right, so you know questions, Mr. Tony?
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that we've discussed this issue over several meetings. I think that's a very, very healthy process. I support taking corrective action to compensate for documented racial bias in the discipline system of, as was documented in the Farkas report. I think it's clear that there have already been a number of steps that have been taken to do so. And I understand this proposal to be on a continuum of those other proposals. At the same time, I am very, very concerned by the level of public opposition to this. And this stands in striking difference to the earlier proposals for which we put out public comment that were on today's agenda in terms of both the volume. And, you know, I, I really appreciate the staff taking the time to separate attorney and non-attorney comments. They've done this for quite a while, and I think it helps us as decision makers. But, you know, our, our main charge is protection of the public. And if the public perceives that we have a proposal that doesn't do that, I don't think it's ready for prime time. I will note particularly, look, the part of what I perceive to be the fundamental structural problem with this proposal, the expungement proposal, is that it comes, at least in its original form, it's been modified a little, from the ad hoc commission on the discipline system roster. And this ad hoc commission on, on attorney discipline, okay, was founded in 2020, before many of us, including myself, were appointed to this board. If I were here during that time, I would have cautioned against the composition. This is a 26-member ad hoc commission on attorney discipline. 23 are attorneys and three members of the public. Okay, that appears to me a tremendous imbalance that undermines the credibility of the commission to not itself carry a pro attorney bias in terms of its thinking. I mean, I, I'm not attributing any ill will, only that, that's kind of natural. There is a reason that the Board of Trustees after 2017, when it was bifurcated from, you know, where the regulatory function was separated from the trade association function, why the legislature decided to make it close to half-half. Seven attorneys, six non-attorneys, okay, six members of the public. Because that way, it gives more of an opportunity, more of a chance for the public interest to be well represented. When you're talking about 87% are attorneys versus 13% of the public, it's very difficult to feel that way. And we see very similar results in this. So what I would recommend is if this came up to a vote today, I would vote no on it with, with the hope that this is something we need to do more work on. Maybe we need a committee that just focuses on this. Maybe we include some of the people who submitted comments that they oppose this. Some of the members of the public who have gone through the discipline. who have gone through the discipline process. If we can get their support for modification, which I do think there needs to be modification. I am in support of that, okay? But I do think we need to do more to gain the support of the public. Uh we don't have this. It it's very clear, so I very much uh would not be ready to vote yes on this and would have to vote no.
Before we move on to uh trustee Grande, um Ms. Good, I know you were on the ad hoc commission, and I don't think this needs to turn into a full rehashing of of the findings of the ad hoc commission and the composition. Uh if you want to speak to any of your personal experiences on the voices of the California public uh being heard during those uh meetings and the diversity of of individuals on that ad hoc commission.
Uh sure, and Chair Stallings, you were chair of the ad hoc commission or vice chair and then chair. Uh Mr. Uh Moab was also on it, as was uh trustee Buena Ventura. And um we all spent a lot of time, had a lot of meetings and did a ton of work. And there were a number of folks from the public, non-attorneys, who were on the ad hoc commission and who um uh participated actively in the ad hoc commission. Um in addition, when it was first formed, uh there were question marks about whether or not it was the right demographics um on the commission and some additional uh people were added um to try to address those concerns. Um so a whole lot of people put a whole lot of work, including the staff, into a bunch of different um facets on this, as we can tell from our executive director's summary of all of the issues and that we're hopefully winding down now on those issues um and getting things done. And hopefully we'll see uh some improvement on these issues. Um to expungement, that was one of the recommendations um that um Robertson made in his report following up on the Farkas report. So that's always been sort of an important issue. There is a subcommittee on that that I served on along with trustee Buena Ventura and Mr. Moab and a number of other people. Uh so I don't know, from my perspective, I felt like it was a full and fair process for members of the public to participate as well as lots of different kinds of attorneys from different practice areas and different sort of practice settings. A government law firm, um you know, different practice areas. Uh so I don't know, Chair Stallings, you might have more to add on that.
I definitely do. Just want to turn first to trustee one of mature. Do you want to add anything?
Yes, uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Um let me just, at least for me, my perspective is that I actually signed on to the ad hoc uh committee commission because of the charge to look into the disparate treatment of minority lawyers, particularly black lawyers. So that was the call of the question, which is, how do we address that? Now, I appreciate Mr. Tony's, and I think we all do, um we we are working for the public and the public protection. But public protection also, I believe, requires a fairness, a fairness in how we go about public protection. And these um ad hoc commi- committee meetings, uh it was clearly not one-sided. There was opposition on both sides and vigorous ones. Uh it was a stressful, stressful meeting, meetings. Um there wasn't always consensus, and there was a lot of debate. And so uh and the the question of protection of the public was uh right up there, along with addressing the disparate treatment of uh uh black attorneys. So uh what we've come up with is not everything I wanted. Um but it's not everything the the opposing sides wanted either. And so um I I I think if we came to uh, we we did come to some resolution, it wasn't easy, but in the end, I think there was compromise and there was fairness in the whole process, and I'm ready to move forward as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and I agree with everything that was just stated. Would I would also add that we had individuals from outside of the state, we had individuals from other licensing agencies who also weighed in. So I really do think that we had exceptionally diverse group of opinions shared. And you just have to look at the um number of issues where uh a recommendation was not reached, just to kind of tell you uh the the parity on that commission. So as I said here today, with my experience with the ad hoc commission, I believe that it was a uh a commission staff with people of of all um, you know, of various backgrounds. They all contributed and the product, I think, is is something that we can be proud of. I'm going to trustee Grande.
Uh I just, I I wasn't up, oh, I've been newbie on the board, so I wasn't around for those conversations. But I think looking as someone who was um uh an attorney and I I was a recipient of one of those emails, I think this, the amount of comment that we go, that we received on this does go back to what trustee Good uh raised initially, where there were specific uh requests for comments from one demographic and not the other. I am one of those people that do read those state bar emails for the most part, and I had to go back and and look where, when did we get this? And yes, it was, it was, there was a request for public comment, and it was about six items down of a long email where the first thing that is talked about is the increase in in state bar dues, right? So um even someone like myself, who is pretty diligent in terms of staying up to date with what's happening and on top of everything else that I'm doing in my line of work, it that definitely wouldn't have been something that I would have thought to even look at. And I think from what I'm hearing and, you know, in I I think that a lot of thoughtful work has been done behind the scenes. I think that if there was direct uh request for comment from the people that have been impacted um by um that would be, that would benefit from from this expungement if they had the opportunity to say, say so, I think. And we could see in some of the comments that those people were the ones that would say that this would would be a godsend, that this would be something that would really allow them to um to move forward with their lives after they've done the work to rehabilitate and take, address whatever underlying issues were there. So um I I think that that the data we perceived is skewed. Um and I, one thing I would suggest is in looking at, especially with these these um rules that we are requesting public comment, there might be a different way that we disseminate that information to to attorneys. Um because I I think there are a lot of people that are interested in seeing these kind of changes, but they don't know how to voice it. And um and they would welcome the opportunity to do so if it was, if it was clear and more simple and more direct. Um but I support moving this forward.
All right, thank you. Back to the goods is narrow, sure.
And I'll keep this short so we can move along. Um thank you, trustee Grande, that was um very eloquent, much more eloquent than I could be. Um I just wanted to pile on on I on the outreach point. You know, now that we know that thirty thousand complaining folks were reached out to individually, and we're assuming most of them are non-attorneys, the three hundred and eleven responses from that demographic represents less than one percent of those thirty thousand people. So I think uh the lack of a sort of even-handed approach in the outreach, the fact that um the non-attorney population responding, eighty-four percent disagreeing, reflecting uh one percent or less of the thirty thousand reached out to, you know, shows that this is not a big public protection issue. Um and we are all very, very mindful of our mission to protect the public, absolutely what we're doing here. But also to trustee one of Ventura's point, to be fair and to remedy past wrongs, which included uh disparate uh disciplinary results for black and Latino attorneys in California. Uh and so that's my final comment. I'm prepared to move this forward. Happy to to uh to move it forward.
All right, so we'll get a little bit more discussion first, though. Uh trustee Tony.
One way that a expungement can in fact um accomplish the goal that trustee Good um appropriately mentioned about correcting past injustices is for the expungement to be one time only, okay? The way that this is, uh my understanding of this motion is that the eight years or what have you is um uh you you know, in in um you you know, for most cases, is a rolling deadline so that it's not just one time, anyone eight years or more from 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 today. And I say that because we don't have the results back from the update to the Farkas report. Earlier in this meeting, we were told that that update would be available in February. Now, if the update shows that the pattern of disparate treatment, uh harsher, uh you know, um discipline to uh black male attorneys in particular remains the same, well, that 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 gives an argument for, um I I could see that as an argument for making it rolling. But if it shows that it is um uh reduced, I don't think it makes sense. So um I, you know, I think it's a mistake to decide today on this. I think more work can be done to get this in a place that um would get at least an improvement in public support. And um there are other bodies that support and advocate for attorneys. I think we have to put public over attorneys.
Right, any other comments? If not, may I have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, that was trustee Good with the first and then trustee Guanamatura with the second?
Yes.
All right. All right, any other discussion, or may I recall the the roll call vote? And can we bring up the resolution? Okay, so it's my understanding that this resolution is as is, there's no change on whether or not we're taking up the um issues relating to CTAP. And trustee Good, is it your motion that all of these resolves uh be moved?
Yes.
All right, then same uh trustee Guanamatura?
Yes.
Okay. And then the admin suspensions, is there any appetite to move those forward today?
I'd be okay moving that forward, uh but um if others want to wait on it, I think at a minimum, this should be moved forward.
Trustee one, one of mature.
I I second that.
Okay, and then as far as words, nothing of that, is there a freezing that we can insert into this, or can we leave it somewhat amorphous? And a for, and another further resolved?
Words, the thing of what exactly? Do you, do you, do you want to have a revised resolution that directs staff to move forward with implementation of the website removal policy as related to administrative suspensions, not that CTAP is within that?
Correct. So that's my understanding of what we just talked about with uh good and one of mature.